Thank you, colleagues. And thank you for your patience this afternoon. And my thanks too to all the officials who have been working very hard behind the scenes. The next item of business is consideration of Business Motion 21379 in the name of Graham Day on behalf of the Parliamentary Bureau on the referral of an SSI. Could I invite Liz Smith on behalf of the Bureau to move this motion?
Move, Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Ms Smith. No member has indicated they wish to speak. The question therefore is that Motion 21379 be agreed. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed, thank you. So I now open the Committee of the whole Parliament to look at stage two of the Coronavirus Scotland Bill. For the duration of these proceedings, I will be the Leader of the Committee. And in dealing with the amendments, members should have the marshalled list, the grouping of amendments. And I would remind members that we follow the normal procedure, which is that the division bell will sound for the first division of the afternoon. And we hope, despite the social distancing measures that we've put in place in the chamber, we believe that there are enough consoles and desks for every member participating. So we hope that each vote will last one minute after a division and 30 seconds thereafter. And any member who wishes to speak in a debate on any group of amendments should press their button as soon as possible after I call that group. So I now refer to the marshalled list. So we're going to begin with, sorry, the first question is actually that Sections 1 and 2 be agreed to. Are we all agreed? We are agreed. Turning to housing, can I call Amendment 1 in the name of Pauline MacNeil, grouped with the amendments as shown in the groupings? And I would point out that if the Amendment 17 is agreed to, I cannot call Amendments 18, 19 and 20 as they'll be preempted. Pauline MacNeil, to move Amendment 1 and speak to all amendments in this group.
Thank you, Presiding Officer, speaking to moving Amendment 1. I'd indicated a few weeks ago at the ministerial statement that I wanted to discuss the notion of rent-free periods should there be larger problems in paying rent due to the coronavirus pandemic. After reflection, I decided not to submit an amendment which was drafted for me, but in the forensic process today it has found its way into the marshalled list. So I'm moving it in order that we can have a discussion in the group. It's my intention to seek permission to withdraw that amendment today, but rather speak to some wider points at Amendment 48. Speaking to Amendment 18, according to Shelter, many people in temporary accommodation are being asked to leave during the pandemic. They give me two cases, one in Dundee where an 18-year-old was asked to leave for accommodation at short notice on the basis of outstanding arrears, service charge arrears, but subsequently accommodated by the Salvation Army. And another individual was asked to leave when a private hostel closed and wasn't refunded for the nights that they had already paid. It possibly could plug a gap in the legislation. I'm sure we all agree that no one should be evicted from temporary accommodation without least due process during the pandemic. It may leave a lot to be desired in the drafting, I appreciate, but I would be looking for the minister's assurances that people in temporary accommodation will not be treated differently or unfairly during the period of the pandemic Covid-19 virus. And finally, I want to address in the group Andy Whitehead's amendments. I support the government's overall policy of no evictions during the pandemic crisis, and I think it's important to raise awareness of that law. I want it to be the strongest law that it can possibly be. I was interested in the statements made by Andy Whitehead at Stage 1, and I'm interested to hear in detail what he'll say about the many amendments that he's lodged at this stage. One I would like to raise with ministers is that concerns me is that those who have been given notice now for eviction, I'd like to see them covered by this bill. And currently, they are not covered by the bill. And I would be interested to discuss with ministers if it's not covered at Stage 2, to see if anything could be done at Stage 3. Thank you, Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much. And can I call Andy Whitehead to speak to Amendment 2 and the other amendments in the group? And I would also highlight that Amendment 19 preempts Amendment 20, both in the name of Andy Whitehead. Mr Whitehead.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. Amendment 19 preempts 20, as the grouping says, 17 preempts 18, 19 and 20. Okay, thank you. Those are all amendments in my name, so clearly that's a measure of the time we've had that I've tabled amendments that preempt each other. Never mind. I want also to join the Presiding Officer in saying an opening thank you to the legislation team in Parliament for the remarkable work over the past few years. Thanks also to the Cabinet Secretary and particularly his officials who engage constructively and promptly in what I think is now known as the Mike Russell Probing Room, set up in Committee Room 4. Greens welcome the provisions in this bill in relationship to social and private tenants. And I want to place on record our appreciation for the work the government has done in this area. This is a substantial interference in the normal workings of the rented housing market, but it is a necessary and proportionate one. So for the avoidance of doubt, we wholly support the measures that are contained in the bill. I also want to thank staff at Shelter in particular for assisting me with these amendments, which do take the provisions in the bill that little bit further, in line with my comments at Stage 1, in relation to the fact that, in our view, there should be nobody served with any notices to quit during the emergency period. So Amendments 3 to 11, first of all, are clarification amendments, in my view, in relation to the grounds for eviction for private residential tenancies, as they are considered by the first-tier tribunal. Now, the first-tier tribunal will be dealing with, hopefully when it gets back up and running, will be dealing with eviction orders in the course of this emergency period. And what Schedule 1 does in the bill is it's concerned with making all the mandatory grounds that exist in the 2016 Act discretionary for the eviction of private residential tenancies during the emergency period. The bill as drafted also requires, and this is new, the tribunal to be, and I quote, "satisfied that it is reasonable to issue an eviction order on account of those facts," end quote. Those facts being the facts pertaining to the circumstances of the landlord in relationship to the specific eviction ground. At least, that is how I read it, and I had a brief discussion with Scottish Government officials on this, and I'm very happy to be corrected if that's not the case. But in light of that belief, I have inserted Amendments 3 to 11 to add the words, and in particular to any relevant fact relating to coronavirus. Now, in the first-tier tribunal, the facts that have to be stated in order to obtain an eviction are facts substantially relating to the landlord's condition. In other words, does the landlord really intend to sell this property? Those are the facts that have to be established. There's very little in the way of facts that need to be established on behalf of the tenant. And yet, in the emergency period, it seems to me that the situation facing, yes, the landlord indeed, who will be affected in some cases by the coronavirus, but also the tenant, and indeed most particularly the tenant, because the tenant faces losing their home, the landlord does not face losing their home. And I want to make absolutely clear, and maybe we can return to this at Stage 3, that in the first-tier tribunal, it can, on these new universally discretionary grounds, take account of relevant facts relating to coronavirus. So that's the first suite. As I intimated at Stage 1, I am also of the view that we need to go further with the bill in two regards. First, instead of extending the notice period as the bill provides, we should, as I noted earlier, suspend the ability to serve notices completely. Many tenants will be, are indeed now, facing very difficult personal circumstances. And they will, as matters stand with the bill, still potentially be in receipt of notices to leave during the emergency period, notwithstanding that those notices will be for a longer duration than normal. And in my view, it's of little comfort to someone in such circumstances to know that they are to be evicted, but not quite yet. So Amendment 16 gives effect to this policy. Now, this is a blanket amendment. In essence, it removes all ability for landlords to initiate eviction proceedings. Now, I'm aware that in our discussions this morning, and in deal as the bill provides itself, there are exemptions for certain grounds in terms of the extended length of the notice period on antisocial behaviour and criminal conduct. And where Amendment 16 to be agreed, I would, of course, be very supportive of amendments at Stage 3 that sought to fetter the blanket effect that's currently given by Amendment 16. Amendments 12, 15 and 17 remove the redundant parts of Schedule 1 where Amendment 16 to be passed. That deals with a second substantial issue. A third substantial issue is the issue of those tenancies which I raised this morning at Stage 1, where either proceedings for eviction have commenced but have not been completed, or where proceedings are concluded with orders and decrees granted but not yet enforced. Now, this latter group, those against whom orders and decrees have been granted, but the landlord, for whatever reason, has not yet enforced them, are possibly the most vulnerable groups of tenants, because they are facing imminent eviction. So Amendments 2, 13, 14, 19, 20 deal, as far as I can determine as competently possible in the short timeframe available, with ensuring that in such cases, whether they be Scottish Secure Tenancies, Short Scottish Secure Tenancies, Scottish Assured Tenancies or Private Residential Tenancies, ensure that in these cases, legal proceedings can be suspended until after the conclusion of the emergency period. And again, if Parliament's minded to support these amendments, I'm happy to support amendments at Stage 3 that would provide some exemptions to those. On a separate note, Amendment 21 makes modifications to the Housing Scotland Act 2001, which allows the Corps, in considering recovery of possession proceedings in relation to Scottish Secure Tenancies, to take account of any rent arrears that have arisen as a result of coronavirus. Currently, it doesn't; this would enable it to do so. Amendment 50 is on quite a different matter in relation to the requisition of accommodation. Now, it is evident, and members will all have received correspondence, no doubt about this, that some accommodation provision needs to be made for homeless people and also for key workers who, for public health reasons, for example, cannot or indeed should not continue to live in their own home, perhaps because of transport difficulties, they live at some distance from their workplace in a hospital, or indeed because a family member is isolating or is vulnerable, and indeed for their own mental welfare, they would like to be closer to their place of work. I'm aware here in Edinburgh that some owners of short-term lets are continuing to offer them for rent to key workers in contravention to the Health Protection, Coronavirus Restrictions, Scotland Regulations 2020 that we'll be voting on later. Now, in my view, the utilisation, for example, of random Airbnb's, particularly those in shared stairs, many of which are unlawful, not having planning consent, in contravention of title conditions, mortgage lending conditions, and without appropriate third-party liability insurance, is singularly ill-suited to the job of housing the homeless or key workers. That job should be done in a coordinated manner, using accommodation such as hostels, hotels, serviced apartments and the like, where there's no interference with the lives of residents and where the health risks can be managed. Now, this is not communism, as Murdafrada intimated earlier on Twitter, but a proportionate response to an emergency. And so what Amendment 50 does is put beyond doubt that local authorities under the Housing Scotland Act 1987 that already have powers to acquire property explicitly have the power to requisition accommodation in connection with a public health emergency facing us. Quite separate issue is Amendment 51, concerned with the unsuitable accommodation regulations. And this seeks to ensure that everyone has a right to not be housed in a suitable accommodation for more than one day during the emergency period. Presiding Officer, I think that's all the amendments. I apologise, I haven't had time to properly consider Pauline MacNeil's amendments, but they look broadly able to be supported. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Whitehead. And can I call on Ross Greer to speak to Amendment 49 and the other amendments in this group?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. Moving Amendment 49 as a result of the behaviour of private providers of student halls of residence in Scotland, members will be aware that, under the terms of the 2016 Tenancies Act, the overwhelming majority of people who live in private rental sector accommodation, who don't live in student accommodation, have a right to terminate their lease with 28 days' notice. Many private rental sector tenants have used that right. Those in student accommodation don't have that right. Student accommodation is treated privately. And whilst every university that I'm aware of, and a number of private providers such as Unite Housing, have been very accommodating of their students during this time of crisis, some private providers have absolutely not. Some private providers have simply attempted to trap students in rooms that they are not actually using. That's what spawned the Not Staying, Not Paying campaign that NUS, many members of the Scottish Youth Parliament, et cetera, and a number of students' associations are running at the moment. There are students being forced to pay for rooms that are simply not staying in because they have left, they have followed public health advice, and they are back staying with their families. My amendment gives students the right to terminate their lease. And should this amendment pass, I want to be clear, I'll move a further clarifying amendment at Stage 3 to make clear that this will give students the same right to terminate their lease with 28 days' notice that other private tenants have. This was the original intent of this amendment, the immediacy of the right, as is currently proposed in my amendment, is simply a consequence of this rushed process. The purpose here is to give students in student accommodation the same right as anyone else in the private rental sector has. Now, I'm aware that the government believes that there are ECHR concerns around this. So to briefly comment on those, this is about a balance of rights. Landlords have rights, but so do tenants, and tenants are vulnerable during a crisis, especially young tenants with little income of their own. We're not talking about pensioners who use rental income like a pension, as Conservative colleagues mentioned this morning. We're talking about private companies who run student halls. So there's two sections of the ECHR that I think are relevant here that I want to very briefly quote from. One is in Article 8.2, where it makes a point, "There'll be no interference by public authority with the exercise of this right, except, such as in accordance with the law and is necessary in a democratic society, in the interests of national security, public safety, or the economic well-being of the country, for the prevention of disorder or crime, for the protection of health or morals, or for the protection of the rights and freedom of others." Clearly, this is an issue of public safety and the protection of health, as called for, as clarified for and provided for under Article 8. Protocol 4, Article 2, also includes relevant points about the liberty of movement and the freedom to choose residence for an individual. This is simply about giving students those rights. If the government believe there are ECHR concerns here, then my question is about the other very bold and very welcome steps that the government themselves are taking to protect private rental sector tenants in other areas. These are moves that we welcome. The intention of my amendment is simply to give students in student accommodation specifically the same rights that anyone else, including students in the normal private rental sector would have, which is why I'm pressing that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Greer. And can I call the Minister, Kevin Stewart, to speak to Amendment 55 and the other amendments in this group?
Thank you very much, Presiding Officer. The government has made it quite clear that no landlord should evict a tenant because they have suffered financial hardship because of coronavirus, and we expect landlords to be flexible with tenants during the course of all of this financial hardship, and we expect folk to be signposted, whether they be in the private sector or the rented sector, to the financial support that is available. I've already written to all landlords in Scotland around about that, and we will continue to communicate with them throughout this period to ensure that we keep people as safe and secure as possible. Presiding Officer, we have moved swiftly on to Stage 2 today. Let me turn first of all to Pauline MacNeil's amendments. I understand that Pauline MacNeil is withdrawing Amendment 1, and I'm grateful for that. In terms of her Amendment 18 on evictions from hostels, it is unclear how this would stop evictions. There is a provision in the Housing Scotland Act 2001 which looks at minimum rights for hostel dwellers, so it is a little bit unclear what the amendment as drafted would do. What I would say to Ms MacNeil is that there's already provision for people who are asked to leave a hostel accommodation, and that should be picked up by the local authority under their statutory duties to homeless people. But if I can reassure Ms MacNeil, I've, on a day and daily basis, almost every waking minute, have been spending time talking to folk around about situations across the country. I would be really interested to find out about the two cases that she has mentioned and what has been done to help those folks, because I know that throughout the country at this moment, in the main, we are getting things right for people, and that's thanks to frontline staff, including the Simon community in Glasgow, Street Works here, and other third-sector organisations across the country. I want to make sure that we get folks off the street, out of hostels, and into the best temporary accommodation that we possibly can. So if Ms MacNeil would choose not to move this, I would pledge here and now that we will have further discussions as we move forward about getting this right for everyone across the country.
I'll give way to Mr Doris.
Bob Doris. Presiding Officer, I hope this is the appropriate grouping to raise this particular concern, given the amendments that we're looking at. I was approached today by a landlord in my constituency, and it is their position that a small amount of tenants, and I believe this would be an absolute rarity, I should point out, who are not financially impacted by Covid-19 may not pay rent despite being perfectly able to do so. As I say, I'm sure that would be an absolute rarity. Can the Minister reinforce those who can pay should continue to pay their rent?
Kevin Stewart.
Presiding Officer, those folks who can afford to pay their rent should continue to pay their rent during this time. Those who find themselves in difficulties should look to accessing the benefit system, universal credit, the housing element of that. We have already given advice to landlords, both in the social sector and in the private rent sector, that they should be telling their tenants this now, and that tenants should approach their landlords immediately that they fall into difficulties. But those that can afford to pay their rent should continue to pay their rent during the course of this period, yes. Presiding Officer, if I could turn to the amendments from Mr Whitehead. First of all, if I can deal with the amendments which add in, in particular to any relevant facts relating to coronavirus, can I say that in moving that about, that would cause some redrafting difficulties, but beyond that, the tribunal itself has to look at the reasonableness of all of this. And I can reassure Mr Whitehead that they will have to look at reasonably the impacts of coronavirus in terms of the decisions that they take. And I think that Mr Whitehead talked to some legal officials earlier around about this, and I would reinforce that we will ensure that those reasonableness grounds include the coronavirus situation.
Andy Whitehead.
I'm very grateful to the Minister for that clarification. Can he confirm that the reasonableness grounds will be taken into account by the tribunal, both in relationship to the interest of the landlord and in relationship to the interest of the tenant in relationship to coronavirus, and will particularly pay attention to the interest of the tenant, because of course they face losing their home?
I would expect the first-tier tribunal on every occasion to look at what is reasonable, not only for the landlord but also for the tenant, and particularly in this current situation that we find ourselves in. Now, we have some disagreements with Mr Whitehead around about some of the grounds for eviction issues. And we believe that there should still be an allowance for evictions in three months of those folks displaying antisocial behaviour and those people who are carrying out criminal acts. And I think that this is extremely important, because some of the acts that may be taking place during the course of this period might actually be dangerous for other householders in the area. So I think that we really need to ensure that we handle this appropriately. And of course, the other area where we think that there should still be a ground for eviction is abandonment, but only if it's proven that the tenant has abandoned. Now, Mr Whitehead has got a huge amount of amendments here around about these issues, some of which, as you've already pointed out, are preempted, and some of them are a little bit confusing. I think it would be fair to... I'll give way to Ms MacNeil.
Pauline MacNeil.
I would like to press the Minister on the specific point of tenants who have already been given notice of eviction, for whatever reason, and that notice has taken place during the coronavirus pandemic. I wonder if he would consider that this bill should be able to cover that situation?
The tribunal has not been sitting for some time, so I would find it difficult to believe that anybody has been given an eviction notice, a legal eviction notice, during this past time. And one of the things which I should say is that any landlord who serves an illegal eviction notice at this moment in time that has not gone through the tribunal will be committing a criminal act and will face, or could face, a fine of £50,000 plus imprisonment. And if any member finds any case like that, I would like to know about that as soon as possible. So I cannot accept Mr Whitehead's amendments in this regard. If I could turn to Mr Whitehead's Amendment 50, that has got real ECHR issues, and I could not accept that. Also, you know, at 1B, it talks about the definition of holiday letting being the meaning given in Regulation 4.4, which is a regulation that could change at any time. So there's technical difficulties around about this too. But if I could reassure Mr Whitehead on this, I've spoken to many local authorities and others in the sector over the past number of weeks. Many local authorities are already looking at utilising accommodation that was previously used for short-term lets as temporary accommodation for homeless people at this moment in time. And that is something that I would encourage all local authorities to look at. Beyond that, we have set up linkages between the Scottish Association of Landlords and some local authorities to try and ensure that we are utilising empty homes in the private rented sector at this time to accommodate folks who find themselves homeless. It is my hope that we can do everything that we possibly can to get homeless people into mainstream temporary accommodation at this moment in time. We have made great effort in moving folks who have been rough-sleeping off of the streets and into hotel accommodation in Glasgow and Edinburgh, but I want that to go further and get folk into mainstream temporary accommodation. And I would like to thank everybody who is helping us in that regard. And I do... I'll take Mr Whitehead.
Andy Whitehead.
I thank the Minister for taking that intervention. I mean, the purpose of this amendment is to ensure that, as a last resort, local authorities have the legal power to requisition property if they need so. The response of the Minister has been very much to the effect that this is already happening, and of course, I welcome that. But in extremis, if property is needed, can he clarify whether local authorities have that legal power if they need it?
Local authorities have a lot of powers at their disposal, often powers that they do not use. If we were to move to a situation of requisition, I would argue by the time we got to the point of looking at all of the implications of this, including the ECHR issues, that the pandemic situation would be well over. You know, as it stands at the moment, local authorities can use compulsory purchase powers to bring, to take buildings into their use. That is a power that is used very rarely, is being used more now because we have changed the guidance on it. But I think that what we have here would be a situation where you could move to something after you have ironed out all of the possible difficulties, but something that probably couldn't come into play for a very long time anyway. And I would much rather that we could reach mutual agreement in places right across the country to utilise empty property at this moment. It is in everybody's interest to do so at this moment in time. It is in the interest of the local authorities in terms of carrying out their duties to house homeless people properly. And beyond that, it is in the interest of landlords, whether they be short-term letters or private rented sector, to actually see their property utilised at this moment, because it is going to be very difficult for some of them to attract tenants by other means during the point of lockdown and beyond, that I would argue. So I would much rather that mutual consent was reached on these issues, and I am sure, I am sure that we can achieve that. If I could turn now to Mr Greer's Amendment 49, and this is a very complex one. This proposed amendment would convert all institutionally provided student accommodation into private residential tenancies. And this would have huge ramifications for students and landlords in relation to that accommodation, where students do not wish to terminate and whose tenancy type suddenly changes dramatically. The legal issues with this amendment need much further consideration, I would argue, and we cannot... and we cannot say today that this amendment is compatible with ECHR. It would treat students differently from... If, I'll take you in, Mr. Greer, but if you could just let me go on with this point. It would treat students differently from other categories of tenant, and there has been no examination of the balance between landlords and tenants' rights. And for that reason alone, I would urge members not to risk this important bill by agreeing to this amendment. I'll take Mr. Greer in now, and I'll continue after.
Ross Greer.
I'm interested in the minister's points about not being able to say for certain in relation to ECHR. The reality is, we can't say for certain in relation to any of these provisions under ECHR. The government's making a number of bold provisions under this bill that do affect the balance of rights between landlords and tenants in other areas. If a private student hall provider did believe that their rights had been undermined by this, they would be able to take it to legal challenge and seek redress if they wished to. The only way that this would affect the bill overall is if the advocate general decided between now and royal assent that this was an issue and therefore paused the whole bill. That is not going to happen with an emergency piece of legislation like this. If private accommodation providers want to seek legal redress, they have the same right to do so that anyone else does.
Kevin Stewart. In terms of the other aspects of this bill that we have put forward, we have looked at that balance and have justified the moves that we are making. Obviously, we have to be absolutely certain that we get this right. The thing about this bill is that there will be an acceleration to royal assent. And we cannot risk, we cannot risk any difficulties at all in ensuring that this bill gains royal assent. And I have real concerns about the legal aspects of this. And I'll give way to Mr. Johnson, yeah.
Daniel Johnson.
I recognise the difficulty the minister has and the need to ensure that this gets, gains royal assent. However, this is a very significant issue with students left with accommodation that, frankly, they do not need anymore because the universities are no longer providing the education. It's a real issue in my constituency. Would he recognise that issue and would he commit to looking for, looking at proposals that might remedy this situation?
Kevin Stewart. Can I say to Mr. Johnson that I recognise the difficulties that some of his constituents face, because they are difficulties that some of my constituents face as well. And what I will say is that we can look at this in the next emergency bill, but we have got to ensure that we get this absolutely right. If this bill does not gain royal assent, then that creates difficulties not only for me as a minister here, or for the government, or for this parliament, but it creates real difficulties for people right across this country in terms of keeping people safe and secure. We will, we can look at this with the second bill, but I would ask Parliament today to reject this amendment. As I say, we recognise beyond doubt that there appears to be an issue in respect of some providers of student accommodations and their consideration of letting students leave their accommodation or tenancy early. However, we are aware as well that a number of the providers are changing their policies and they're agreeing to students being released from their agreements early. And the minister for Further Education, Higher Education and Science has written to all of the university and college principals, copied to the networks involving student accommodation providers, asking that all of the institutions look sympathetically on any need for students to extend their stay beyond the existing arrangements. He has also asked that this be extended to those who have returned to the family home and are having to ask to break agreements. And that institutions continue to be as helpful as possible to avoid disadvantaging these students. So we are working with accommodation providers already on this to see how we can all work together to support students still in student accommodation. The proposed amendment... I'll take Mr. Finlay.
Neil Finlay.
I wonder if he could help. The minister mentioned a second bill. I wonder if he could elaborate on that because, you know, it may just be me, but I've not heard of that.
Kevin Stewart.
I actually never heard what Mr. Finlay said there.
Sorry, the minister earlier mentioned a second bill, maybe forthcoming. I wonder if he could elaborate on that.
Kevin Stewart.
Mr. Russell will deal with all of that in his summing up, Presiding Officer. Presiding Officer, if I could ask members to reject Amendment 49. Presiding Officer, I am well aware that I'm asking Parliament to reject all of the amendments in this group. However, however, ah, sorry, I've missed one. I beg your pardon, Presiding Officer. This is what happens when you have situations where you are dealing with things at the tail end. Mr. Whitehead, Amendment 51, and I apologise for not mentioning this, a roundabout unsuitable accommodation. This amendment does cause some difficulties, but I see exactly where Mr. Whitehead is coming from in all of this. And I am willing to work with members to look and see what we can do to improve in terms of the unsuitable accommodation orders legislation. I would ask for patience and that we have the time to look at this for the future bill.
If Mr. Stewart could speak at the front, please.
Sorry?
If Mr. Stewart could address through the microphone.
Sorry, sorry. And we will, as I say, we will look at that for the future bill. As I said, I'm aware that we're asking Parliament to reject all of these amendments. However, I am more than willing to continue to talk to members around about some of the issues that they have brought to the government's attention. I can assure Parliament that I am doing all that I can to talk to stakeholders on a very, very regular basis in order that we get things right. And I'm more than happy to pinch any wise suggestions that come from any part of this chamber in order to get all of this right for the people out there who we must keep as safe and secure as possible. Thank you very much, Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Can I call Graeme Simpson?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. Well, the minister finished by saying he's prepared to work with other parties and take on board good ideas. Well, we've already been putting forward good ideas through my good friend, Murdo Fraser, and we're well aware of the legislation that's going to follow after, after the recess. Some of those ideas, some relating to holiday accommodation, may well appear in that legislation. And for me, that's the way to do business in this parliament. The way to do business, the way not to do business is to fly kites and launch mini-campanes in stage two of what is an emergency bill. The number of amendments of that nature in this group today is frankly absurd. They should have, they deal with very technical issues, detailed issues that require proper scrutiny, and to throw them in at this point is, is absolutely ridiculous. So we, we will, we will be... Yes, I'll take an intervention.
Andy Whitehead.
I think the member has to say, he says this is absurd. He knows as well as I do what parliamentary process is, and he knows as well as I do the timescales within which we're working on this particular bill. And he's also aware that there is a policy issue here about whether the government's proposals in the bill are adequate or not. We take the view that they need to go further. That's an honest difference of view with the, with the government. I've made it very, very clear that we wholeheartedly agree with what's in the bill and will be supporting, believe it needs to go further. So I'd ask him to just justify his remarks that these amendments, which have, you know, taken quite a bit of considerable work, are, in his words, absurd.
Graeme Simpson.
Well, I'll be coming on to one of your most absurd amendments, Mr. Whitehead, in a second. The way to, the way to do this is, is to actually, I'm actually surprised that the wee nats have not talked to the big nats more on this. And in a, in a way that Mr. Fraser has been doing, because we've, we've...
Mr. Simpson, Mr. Simpson's normally a very polite member. I would urge him to stick to that, not to use even jokey terms across the table, across the chamber.
I do apologise, Presiding Officer. It's a joke I've used before and I got away with it. Now, we will not, we will be opposing most of the amendments in this group, all bar, all bar two, 55 and 58, which are in the name of Mr. Russell, spoken about by Mr. Stewart. Now, if I can just turn to a few of the amendments that deserve some comment. Minimal comment, indeed, quite right. Well, let's take, let's have a look at Mr. Whitehead's Amendment 50, shall we? That is a good one, described, described as a dose of communism by Mr. Fraser on Twitter. And that's absolutely what it is, because it would effectively give councils the power to grab, grab accommodation, grab holiday accommodation, should they feel the need to have it, requisition it. And that's, I mean, I go back to what I said at the start, Presiding Officer. If you want to introduce this sort of idea, you surely, surely have to sort of go out to consultation on, on this and, you know, and I, yeah, it's just a step too far, absolutely absurd. Mr. Greer's one on student accommodation. I agree with the minister on this. There are human rights issues around this, and Mr. Greer, at the very least, should have been speaking to other parties for a number of days, if not weeks, if he wanted to introduce this kind of thing. Now, so we will, we will, as I say, be opposing pretty much everything in this group. I go back to what I said earlier today, a long time ago, Presiding Officer. This, this bill, it's an emergency bill to deal with a crisis that we're facing right now to do with coronavirus. And that's, that's what this is about. And when I spoke this morning, I made the point that we have people who are, no, that we, we have people who are ill, people who are, who are stuck at home because of that, people who have lost their jobs, people who will go on to lose their jobs. And that's what this bill deals with. And that's why we've introduced, we will be introducing, I hope, measures to prevent evictions in certain cases, but not in all cases, because that would be entirely wrong. That would be going too far. And what we're doing actually leaves some landlords in the position, or will leave some landlords in the position, of not getting any income on properties for over a year. Now, by discussing with, with the government, we've got an agreement to introduce a fund that would help out landlords in those cases. And some of them then, you know, they don't have big property portfolios. I can hear Mr. Finlay muttering at the back as he usually does. Most of landlords in Scotland, 95%, have between one and five properties. These are not wealthy people. Often, they're pensioners, relying on the income to pay their, you know, pay their way. So I think, I think that given that we've got that agreement to have that fund put in place, then the measures that are in the bill are sensible, proportionate and should be supported. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. And I call on Polly McNeil to wind up in this section and to press her withdrawal, Amendment 1.
I seek to withdraw Amendment 1, and I won't be pressing Amendment 18. In summary, Presiding Officer, unlike Mr. Simpson in this chamber, this side of the benches applaud the efforts of Andy Whitehead to bring some technical detail and some, I think, welcome scrutiny to this bill. Because the magnitude of disruption, and that's not withstanding the support that we would give to landlords, and I've made that clear earlier, but the magnitude of disruption that has already happened to vulnerable tenants, and that isn't even considering what might be lying ahead. So I think it's unfortunate to reduce this to something as trivial as suggesting any member would come to the chamber, even if you disagree, and even if the minister disagrees. I would like to think that he would get to his feet and support the idea that we scrutinise this, because we do not think the government have gone far enough. We've said that. But I also want to make this clear, that we have supported the government this morning, we'll support the government again, and whenever we can find consensus, we will be there with the government. But we, we demand the right to be able to challenge them on the areas where we think tenants will be vulnerable. And I will let the minister in a minute, and I'd like you to answer this question. I already have a case where notice was given a week ago to a couple on the grounds that their family want to move in. Now, you can take a view about that. But they will be affected, they will be evicted because this bill does not allow for them to be covered. That deeply concerns me, and it's not a comfort to my constituents that the tribunal is not sitting, because they will feel that they are breaking the law because the notice has been served. And I'll take.
Kevin Stewart.
Presiding Officer, I want to work across Parliament in order to make sure that we get what we are doing absolutely right. And I've got absolutely no problem with scrutiny taking place on all of this.
Mr. Stewart, your microphone is just low, sir.
Sorry, we do have some differing views around about certain aspects of this, but I think there's one clear message in all of this. We all have to do our bit to protect people as much as we possibly can during all of this. There will be folks who, throughout this, will act in an absolutely magnificent way and will rise to the challenges and be as good as they possibly can be. But there will also be folks who do not behave during the course of this. I would point out again the criminal aspect of illegal eviction, £50,000 fine and possibly some time in jail. And I think we should all be pointing that out to those folks who choose or try to flout the rules that we have in place.
Polly McNeil.
Yes, indeed. And in conclusion, Presiding Officer, we're legislating here for what we can only guess the situation that people will be in, and I think that has to be borne in mind, but we know there will be direct consequences for tenants. I wholeheartedly welcome the minister's assurance to me about those in temporary accommodations. I'm not going to press Amendment 18. I just wanted to say in conclusion that I think it's right, Andy Whitehead makes a very important point in relation to the directions given to property tribunals when the time comes, when the notice period is lifted and people will be brought before the tribunals for non-payment of rent or whatever. I think that what the minister has put on record is helpful. It must be clear that when a property tribunal is applying the test of reasonableness, they must consider that in the context of the coronavirus pandemic and that the loss of a job or circumstances which are clearly impacted on them, causing them to be in arrears, is directly relevant to the tribunal when they are considering all the circumstances. Thank you, Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Mrs. McNeil. Now, Mrs. McNeil wishes to withdraw Amendment 1. Does any member object?
No.
No, that's good. Can I call Amendment 2 in the name of Andy Whitehead? Andy Whitehead to move.
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 2 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. Now, this is the first division of the afternoon, so I'm afraid I'm going to have to ring the division bell and summon members of the chamber, and there will be a five-minute suspension, five-minute suspension. Thank you, colleagues. Whoa. Thank you, colleagues. I think that members have had the chance to make their way to the chamber now, so the question is, we're going to move straight to the vote, the question is that Amendment Two be agreed to, and members may vote now. This is a thirty-second division. Amendment Two. The result of the vote on Amendment Two, in the name of Andy Whitman, is yes, twenty-four, no, fifty-seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment Three, in the name of Andy Whitman? Andy Whitman to move?
Presiding Officer, enter not to move amendments three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven.
Thank you very much. That's very handy. Did Mr Whitman stop at eleven? In that case, can I call Amendment Twelve, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Twelve be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We'll move to a vote on Amendment Twelve. Members may vote now. The result of the vote on Amendment Number Twelve, in the name of Andy Whitman, is yes, twenty-four, no, fifty-seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment Thirteen, Andy Whitman to move? That is not moved. Can I call Amendment Fourteen, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. Can I call Amendment Fifteen, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. Can I call Amendment Sixteen, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment Sixteen be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We'll move to a vote on Amendment Sixteen, members may cast their votes now. The result of the vote on Amendment Number Sixteen, in the name of Andy Whitman, is yes, twenty-four, no, fifty-seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment Seventeen, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. Can I confirm with Polly McNeil that she will not move Amendment Eighteen? Not moved. Can I call Amendment Nineteen, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. Can I call Amendment Twenty, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Not moved.
Not moved. Can I call Amendment Twenty-One, Andy Whitman to move or not move?
Not moved.
That is not moved. Thank you very much. The question is that Schedule One be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The question is that Section Three, Schedule Two, Section Four, Schedule Three, and Section Five be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed, thank you. We're going to turn now to the Justice section. Can I call Amendment Twenty-two, in the name of Stuart Stevenson, grouped with Amendments Twenty-three to Twenty-seven? And I would point out that if Amendment Twenty-five is agreed to, I cannot call Amendment Twenty-six as it will be preempted. Stuart. Hang on a second, I think Stuart McMillan.
Hi, Presiding Officer, just, I'm doing this on behalf of Stuart Stevenson, who can't be here.
Stuart McMillan to move, sorry, yes, members, Stuart McMillan is moving the amendments on behalf of Stuart Stevenson. Thank you very much, Stuart McMillan.
Thanks, Presiding Officer. Stuart Stevenson can't be here, so he asked me to put this forward, speak on his behalf as a probing amendment, just really to ask a question to the Cabinet Secretary as to whether I can confirm that notwithstanding the reference to websites as giving permission, it's also the case that any printed notice such as letterheads, giving an email address, can also give such permission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hamza Yousaf.
It's a probing amendment, so therefore I'm happy to confirm, but I would say I would urge members to reject Amendment Two, if it's, Twenty-two, if it's pressed, but I'm sure it will not.
Can I call Monica Lennon to speak to Amendment Twenty-three and the other amendments in this group?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. The effect of Amendment Twenty-three is to add the Mental Health Tribunal for Scotland to the definition of tribunal in the bill at Schedule Four. The reason for this is that the Mental Health Tribunal for Scotland has not been transferred to the first-tier tribunal for Scotland, it is not included in the interpretation provision in Schedule Four, therefore this omission needs to be rectified, and this amendment is therefore necessary, and I thank the Law Society of Scotland for their assistance.
Thank you very much. And can I call Cabinet Secretary Hamza Yousaf to speak to Amendment Twenty-four and the other amendments in this group?
Thank you very much, Presiding Officer. Amendment Twenty-three.
Amendment Twenty-four in your name and the other amendments in the group.
Yeah, yeah, so I thought we were talking about Mental Health Tribunals here. In terms of Amendment Twenty-four, the amendment in my name, as Lord President has said in his written statement earlier this week, such a significant area as trial by jury is a matter for Parliament, and this chamber has been clear that there is need for further dialogue on these matters. I can understand the concerns raised, but I hope it's also accepted that this temporary measure is only being proposed to ensure that our criminal justice system could continue to operate effectively during these incredibly challenging times. It will now begin a period of intensive and wide-ranging discussion with the judiciary, legal profession, victims' organisations, and political parties to find practical and achievable solutions to this impasse. I don't think there will be any easy answers, as was suggested at Stage One debate, but I am equally going to, of course, take forward these consultations with an open mind and good faith. I think the delay in the cases that we may well see will be intolerable, so I hope we can find a resolution to this matter. So with that, I look forward to the Parliament accepting my amendment, Amendment Twenty-four.
Thank you very much. And can I call Daniel Johnson to speak to Amendment Twenty-five and the other amendments in this group?
Thank you, Presiding Officer, and I too would like to begin by thanking the Law Society, who have done an extraordinary amount of work in a very short space of time and provided us with a huge amount of detail on this bill. And indeed, my amendments address at least one of the points that they raised, in particular with regard to the extension of exemptions to provide for hearsay evidence in court. We've just heard from the Cabinet Secretary regarding the issues raised about jury trials, but, and while they received much discussion at the Stage One debate this morning, of equal concern are the provisions for extending hearsay in trials. Our system of justice relies on several principles. One of those principles is trial by jury, trial by one's peers, but the other is that evidence can be robustly tested in court. We do that through cross-examination. And while it is true that hearsay is admitted based on the exemptions which are provided for in the Criminal Procedure Act nineteen ninety-five, those exceptions were just that, exceptional. What we are looking at today will make those exemptions very much the norm, as people aren't able to attend court and aren't able to be cross-examined. So that was the intention behind my Amendment Twenty-five. However, there is a drafting error, and I will not be pressing it, but I do think those are issues that need to be considered very carefully, especially given that we have the opportunity of a further emergency bill when we return from recess. The other issue which I believe needs to be examined is that of remand and with regard to early release of prisoners. The bill that we have in front of us gives significant powers to ministers to provide for early release of prisoners, and I think that is sensible and it is prudent, it is important that we manage the prison population for two critical reasons, one for the reasons of the capacity of the criminal justice system, but secondly, because prisons themselves are very understandably a cause for concern in terms of them being centres of transmission of the virus itself. Remand constitutes twenty per cent of our prison population and fifty per cent of the daily comings and goings of prisoners going into and out from prison. It therefore stands to reason that is a significant issue and concern, but as it stands, this bill does not provide the powers to ministers to provide for early release for prisoners on remand. The second of my amendments, Amendment Twenty-seven, sought to deal with that. However, I recognise this is a complex issue, and again, this is very much a probing amendment and one that I'd be to discuss and continue to raise as this situation continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And can I ask, call Hamilton to speak to Amendment Twenty-six and the other amendments in this group?
Thank you very much, Presiding Officer. I rise to move Amendment Twenty-six in my name, but before I come on to that, I want to say a few words about Amendment Twenty-four and my gratitude to the government for moving so far on this. The changes made by the UK government in their bill last week, one which we passed the LCM for, were the first of many difficult adaptations that we will have to make to our society in our response to this crisis. As a Liberal, it's very hard for me to accept that for the safety and protection of the most vulnerable in our society, we must surrender certain aspects of our freedom and our liberties for the time being, but I have made my peace with that around the measures introduced so far. We in this party could not have supported the introduction of new powers contained in Part Five of Schedule Four around the ability of ministers to remove juries in trials of indictment for the duration of the emergency, so I wholeheartedly welcome this amendment in the name of the government. The English Courts and Tribunal Services, we heard this morning, are pausing all trials until such time as they can find measures to safely operate juries, and I believe that we should rise to that challenge and emulate it. Indeed, were we to have passed this, we would have been one of the only democracies in the whole world who in just the second week of lockdown would have ended a tradition that had lasted eight hundred years in Scotland, and I think that would have been a very sad day. The meat of this argument is around the balance of rights. As a Liberal, I can see the opportunity to be tried before a jury of appeals, almost as a human right. But to not have defendants languishing on remand as they wait for us to find a solution here is also a right we have to observe as well, and one that is justiciable under the terms of the ECHR. We do not suggest that those two rights are mutually exclusive, nor do we suggest delaying these trials in perpetuity. The bill gives latitude to extend the time bar, let us take that for as long as we need to, but only for as long as we need to. The Lord Chief Justice in England is looking for solutions, and I mentioned some of those to the Cabinet Secretary in my speech this morning. I was deadly serious about the use of places of public gathering, such as cinemas or theatres, which provide much more space than traditional courtrooms, and I think they could be easily repurposed with the audiovisual technology that we need to do so. Proponents of Clause Eleven outside of this chamber also point to tremendous backlog of cases they imagine that might build up if we pause the system. But to then, I say again, we need only pause the system for as long as it takes us to find a solution to allow juries to sit safely. In any case, it's also true that during this period of lockdown, there could be a dramatic reduction in the number of solemn arrests being made due to the absence of people on our streets. This upstream, the reduction of upstream workload could give ample space for courts to clear any backlog that did arise. I'm very grateful to the government for heeding the concerns, and myself, and the parties, the Bar Association, and the Law Society of Scotland, and solicitors, the length and breadth of this country in moving this amendment, so I'm very glad to see it. It's very welcome, it recognises that in our, only in our second week of lockdown, Scotland has no cause to be the only country in the free world to dispense with the tradition of justice that has endured unbroken for eight hundred years. On Amendment Twenty-six, I should say by opening that I absolutely support Daniel Johnson's amendments, I understand he's not intending to press that, but we will be supportive of any moves he attempts to take this forward in later legislation. Presiding Officer, as politicians, we don't like to be asked hard questions, but everyone in this chamber knows the power of asking questions. By asking questions, you can probe what is being said, draw out areas of agreement, and highlight inconsistency. The same is true in a criminal trial. A witness giving evidence in the witness box or in a court or by a video link from a remote site can be asked questions, have their evidence proved, and any inconsistencies addressed, they can be cross-examined by the defence. However, sometimes a witness cannot be in court, sometimes a witness will have died since they gave a statement to police. The law now recognises that the evidence of witnesses who are abroad, who can't be traced or are unwell, might only be available if their statements are read to the jury. It's not ideal, but it is a necessary compromise, and we find the law in Section two five nine of the Criminal Procedure, Scotland Act ninety-five. However, it is important to realise that following a decision of the High Court of the Justicary in two thousand and three, in NVHMA two thousand and three, the trial judge has no discretion. If a witness's statement meets the criteria of the section, then they have to admit the evidence of that witness by statement. Lord Gill, the then Lord Justice General, was clear that the judge can't choose whether to allow the statement into evidence. If the test in that section is met, then the statement is used. Our concern is that the proposal in the government's bill would result with statements being used instead of oral evidence for any witness for whom it is not reasonable or practical because of a reason relating to the coronavirus, for the person who made the statement to attend the trial or to give evidence in any other competent manner. What does that even mean? Who fulfils that condition? Paragraph two five six, the policy memorandum, explains that this is designed to ensure that witnesses who are unable to attend court to give evidence in person or to give evidence because they are self-isolating but do not have access to equipment required to give evidence via video link or lack the technical skills to operate. but do not have access to equipment required to give evidence via video link or lack the technical skills to operate that equipment can have their statement admitted in evidence. That sounds very sensible, but it's not what the government are proposing. What about a witness who is not at high or higher risk and would, if they had an essential job, still be working? Why could they not come to court and give evidence or to a remote site to give evidence by video? Giving evidence is important. The prosecutor would not use the evidence of the witness if it was not essential. We understand that there will have to be a role for the good sense of prosecution service here, who cannot support a proposal that makes the test so wide that almost any witness could claim they fell within it. Scottish Criminal Bar Association cannot support this proposal and have told us, "We urge", and I quote, "we urge that care is taken if the rule against hearsay evidence is to be varied as proposed", "in that thought is given to how such an important step is taken securely and robustly. It cannot rely on the whim of the witness. Experience suggests that if it does, advantage will be taken on it." I'm coming to the end. You'll be glad to hear, if the condition is as loose as the government proposal, then the court will have to admit evidence that involves a witness who says they haven't got the technology to give evidence from home and don't want to leave home, even if they are not at high or higher risk from the virus. Our proposal is designed, or my amendment is designed to tighten up the criteria. It would focus the test on whether there was a particular risk to the wellbeing of witnesses or others from them coming into the court or the remote site of even having a court officer deliver a laptop with a video camera so they could give evidence from home. Judges would still have no discretion whether to admit statements in the new protective criteria in subsection two A if it were met, but they would have to decide whether there is a particular risk of wellbeing attributable to the coronavirus. The intention of this amendment is that judges should decide whether there is a particular risk to wellbeing to the witness due to coronavirus or transmitting, and whether that risk outweighs the undoubted benefit to the interests of justice and the fair trial of having the witness examined on oath in the usual manner. And I move the amendment in my name.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cole-Hamilton, can I call Liam Kerr?
I can't speak for long. Initially, we were inclined towards the Lennon amendment at twenty three, as I too read the Law Society's note, and of course I attach weight to that. But I believe the President of the Mental Health Tribunal might say it's unnecessary. And I'll take an intervention from the Cabinet Secretary if he'd be able to give me more detail on that.
Can I thank Liam Kerr for doing so? Of course, I should have responded to the other amendments, which I hopefully will be able to do, hopefully after this, after Liam Kerr's amendment. Sorry, intervention. Can I say to Liam Kerr, we did get quite strong representations from the President of the Mental Health Tribunal. The President said that the tribunal already has powers to deal with matters by electronic means. It does not need the benefit of the bill's provisions on that subject, and including it is only likely to confuse matters. And of course, we want to try to avoid duplication in legislation where necessary. So those powers already exist. They already have them, and there's no need to duplicate them in this legislation.
Liam Kerr?
I'm very grateful to the Cabinet Secretary for that clarification, which is very helpful. As stated this morning, I welcome the Cabinet Secretary's amendment twenty four. I'm glad that the government responded to the considerable pressure. And of course, we understand the concern that it sought to address. But as we heard this morning, the section is not necessary and there are other ways to address it. And I very much look forward to positive engagement in the near future on this. The Johnson amendment twenty five is interesting. I was glad he brought it forward to be aired. Whilst we were sympathetic to the points raised, we would have had difficulty with the amendment. So I'm pleased he's not pressing it. And finally, having listened to the debate, I incline towards Alex Cole-Hamilton's amendment twenty six. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I call on the Cabinet Secretary, Hamza Youssef.
Just most briefly on the amendments that I didn't touch upon. In terms of Daniel Johnson's amendment twenty five, I can again understand where he is coming from and understand his concerns that he, of course, raises legitimately. But I would say the coronavirus outbreak is likely to mean some witnesses will be unable to attend court to give evidence in person or to give evidence, in fact, in any other manner. So this new measure is intended to reduce the impact of the coronavirus on court business by allowing statement to be used in evidence in appropriate cases where there are no other alternatives. And that is the important part. But notwithstanding that, we do recognise a number of concerns that have been raised on this issue. The Law Society in Scotland, or Scotland in particular, raising those concerns. So I would invite Daniel Johnson not to move amendment twenty five, but very happy to support Alex Cole-Hamilton's amendment twenty six for the reasons that he's really already outlined when speaking to his amendment. In terms of Daniel Johnson's other amendment, amendment number twenty seven, can I first of all recognise a longstanding interest that Daniel Johnson has had in relation to our prison population, reducing it, but particularly those on remand. He and I both agree we have too many remand prisoners here in Scotland. But what I would say in terms of his amendment, the prisoners on remand, of course, are very different to other prisoners that are in our care, because of course they are in there because of court mandated decision and around bail. It would not be right, I think, to go above the courts in this regard. There's a longstanding established role to judiciary determining whether the accused of a criminal offence should be bailed or remanded. I think there would also be some operational issues if his amendment was to pass. For example, on what basis would remand prisoners be released? Would it be conditional? Would it be unconditional? Who would then set those conditions, for example? And the very last point I'd make to Daniel Johnson, to give him some reassurance, that there's already a mechanism in place for remand prisoners to review the refusal of bail where their circumstances have changed. The courts may well view, without prejudging, of course, the courts may well view the coronavirus outbreak as a material change in circumstances. Indeed, the courts have confirmed they'll continue to give priority to bail reviews and appeals. So I'll look forward to continuing to work with Daniel Johnson in order to see how we can seek to reduce the prison population, particularly those on remand. But I would suggest to him this would not be the way to do it. So I hope he doesn't move his amendment.
Thank you very much, Cabinet Secretary. And can I call on Stuart McMillan to wind up in this group and to press for withdrawal amendment twenty two?
Just to withdraw, Presiding Officer?
Thank you very much. Mr. McMillan wishes to withdraw amendment twenty two in the name of Stuart Stevenson. Does any member object? No, thank you. Can I call amendment twenty three in the name of Monica Lennon, Monica Lennon, to move or not move?
Thank you. There's been new information that's come from the President of the Mental Health Tribunal for Scotland. So on that basis, I'm happy to withdraw the amendment.
Thank you. Question, amendment twenty three is not moved. Can I call amendment twenty four in the name of the Cabinet Secretary, Cabinet Secretary to move formally?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that amendment twenty four be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. Can I call amendment twenty five in the name of Daniel Johnson? I think Daniel Johnson indicated he did not wish to move this.
Not moved.
That is not moved. Can I call amendment twenty six in the name of Alex Cole-Hamilton? Alex Cole-Hamilton to move.
Move, Presiding Officer.
That is moved. The question is that amendment twenty six be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. I call amendment twenty seven, again, Daniel Johnson to move or not move amendment twenty six.
Moved.
That is not moved. Thank you. So the next question is that schedule four be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The next question is that section six, schedule five and section seven be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. We're going to turn now to the functioning of public bodies and in particular freedom of information. Can I call amendment twenty eight in the name of Neil Findlay, grouped with amendments as shown in the groupings. And I would point out that if amendment twenty nine is agreed to, I cannot call amendments thirty to forty six inclusive. If amendment thirty six is agreed to, I cannot call amendments thirty seven, thirty eight and thirty nine. And if amendment forty two is agreed to, I cannot call amendments forty three, forty four and forty five, all due to preemptions. But I will outline those when we come to each vote. So Neil Findlay to move amendment twenty eight and speak to all amendments in this group.
Presiding Officer, thanks very much. I wonder if I could begin. I see the Cabinet Secretary, I think, has left. Maybe one of the ministers on the front bench could answer this question. There was, I asked earlier about another bill coming forward. I wonder if it's possible whether the minister on the front bench could tell us whether that bill is only a justice bill or whether it would cover other elements. It would be very helpful before we proceed.
Cabinet Secretary, Hamza Youssef.
So the initial offer of another bill was to look at the issue related to solemn proceedings. But there is an indication given by the Cabinet Secretary that depending on what is discussed here, and of course, if other issues come forward by other members, then we will be open-minded to making the scope of that bill wider than that.
Thank you. Neil Findley?
Okay, that's very helpful clarification. Presiding Officer, there are huge decisions being made by governments and public bodies and agencies across the world at this time of crisis. The decisions made by government and public bodies affect people's jobs, their businesses, their homes, their families. They will reverberate for years to come, impacting on every citizen of our country. And some of these are literally life and death decisions. It is the role of this Parliament, of members of this Parliament, of councillors, of the media, indeed the public, to hold the government and other public bodies to account. We cannot abandon key elements of scrutiny and transparency at this critical time. Indeed, the First Minister herself has said that transparency is vital and that she is committed to it. That is very welcome. Greater transparency gives the public more confidence in what has been done in their name. It was therefore surprising and disappointing to see what came forward this morning or yesterday from the government. It's in the interest of openness, transparency and accountability that I've submitted my amendments in my name and on behalf of the Labour Party. Twenty eight, this amendment seeks changes to the blanket approach to the coverage of this bill. To those sectors under the greatest pressure, it limits new provisions of the bill to health boards, primary care providers and IGBs, and leaves existing legislation to apply to the other bodies. I have omitted local government in this section, and I would seek to remedy that at stage three. Amendment twenty nine for me is the key amendment in this group. It would delete entirely part two of the bill relating to freedom of information. It appears that no other jurisdiction across the Western world, including the UK government with its large parliamentary majority, have sought to use emergency coronavirus legislation to curtail access to information in the way that this bill attempts to do so here in Scotland. Scotland is standalone with this very restrictive action. The Scottish government has not provided justification for the necessity and urgency of this. An alternative, more considered and balanced approach is essential and in line with the commitments that we have on human rights and open government. I would therefore ask the Cabinet Secretary if he will engage with the Commissioner and follow the New Zealand Chief Ombudsman's approach, which is altogether more pragmatic and sensible and which puts responsibility to act reasonably on both the applicant and the body subject to the FOI. The New Zealand Chief Ombudsman has been clear, the responding body will not be penalised for going over time if it is justified in the circumstances. Now, I would suggest that this non-legislative approach is a much more constructive way to go and one that we should follow. And can I say to members as an added incentive, if we support amendment twenty nine, it preempts another sixteen amendments and would save us a lot of time. Amendment thirty refers to the restricted list of most pressured public bodies that I referred to earlier. Thirty one to thirty five, thirty seven to thirty nine seeks to change timelines and FOIs, amending the number of days. Forty seven refers to providing the Scottish Information Commissioner with additional finance should that be required to provide the public with information about their rights. Fifty six and fifty seven would restrict the length of time these changes would last to the thirtieth of June twenty twenty. Any restriction on FOI should only be a temporary measure and should be clearly time limited so that the public can hold government and public bodies to account. Restrictions should not be kept on the statute book a day longer than they have to. Presiding Officer, the freedom of information system was hard won. It's a key part of our democracy, a key element of the openness and transparency of our society. It's there to inform. As I mentioned earlier, no other Western democracy seeks to impose such restrictions, even in these difficult times. It is essential and it is in the interest of good decision-making and good governance that we maintain such a system.
Thank you very much, Mr. Findley. Can I call Ross Greer to speak to amendment thirty six and the other amendments in this group?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I'm moving this amendment and the others because I understand the immense pressure that some public bodies are facing during this crisis. But we need to strike a balance between the effective use of reduced resources and the need for transparency as a way to maintain faith in public institutions during a time of crisis. So I've proposed a group of amendments which I believe as a whole strike a reasonable balance here. But before I do that, I have a question for the government about schedule six as a whole and paragraph seven specifically, that a minister might want to address through an intervention or through their own contributions to this group. Paragraph seven gives the Information Commissioner broad remit to take the virus and its impact into account when considering public bodies' response to FOI requests. So my question, and it's a sincere one, is why this section alone is not sufficient in providing flexibility for public bodies in their response times. But turning to my amendments, in combination, they do the following. They would remove the extension of the review period from twenty to sixty days, and they would remove the additional forty days discretionary extension for both the initial request period and the review. So that would reduce the total maximum period in which an FOI could be responded to from two hundred working days to eighty. Now, eighty is still quite long. The current forty days, you know, it's doubled the current forty days between the initial request and conclusion. As someone who uses FOI extensively to hold this government to account and for whom the review process is a norm with obstructive public bodies, I don't relish this. But I recognise the strain that some public bodies are under. And on that point of this being some public bodies most directly affected, my amendment forty would provide that this section only applies to public bodies who are the most pressed by the crisis. Neil Findley's amendment twenty eight has similar intentions. The Greens believe that to be prescriptive now through primary legislation is not the best option. We'd rather give the government time. Yes?
Neil Findley?
Thanks for doing so. Does he accept that the approach being taken in New Zealand is a much more pragmatic approach and that I think one that we could all work with and live with? If we applied that here, it would be a non-legislative response.
Ross Greer?
Yeah, I was reading up on the approach in New Zealand this morning. And I don't understand the freedom of information law in New Zealand that underpins what the ombudsman's statement was. But yeah, it's exactly because of that and what the New Zealand ombudsman said today that I posed that question to the government. Because paragraph seven of this section would give the Information Commissioner broad, flexible remit during this crisis, which draws into question why the rest of the section is necessary at all. But to the point of which public bodies this affects, there are a huge number of public bodies who can be subject to FOI requests. And I wouldn't want to have accidentally omitted public bodies that should be included in this because they are subject to pressure, but are not ones that we realise today, which is why we have proposed this approach, have given the government dispensation to put this together via SSI with appropriate consultation of Parliament to ensure that that SSI is actually approved. Now, if my amendment forty two is to fall and paragraph six remains, we're content to support the ministers' amendments forty three to forty six to clarify that paragraph. Paragraph six is essentially redundant without paragraph five, so I would urge members to remove both of them. And we'll also certainly be supporting amendment forty seven in the name of Mr. Findley to ensure that the Commissioner's office is sufficiently resourced, given the additional responsibility that they're going to have during this period. That will be absolutely critical. And I'm grateful to Mr. Findley for having proposed it. To briefly go back to the extension to appeal times, I hope Parliament will support my amendment to simply remove this extension for the reasons that I've already outlined, given particular consideration to what I've mentioned about the powers given in paragraph seven to the Information Commissioner, which I believe make the sweeping extension unnecessary. But if my amendment thirty six is to pass, it would preempt amendments thirty seven to thirty nine from Mr. Findley. If amendment thirty six were to fall, we would of course be content to support those amendments as well. And I'll finish at that point, Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greer. And can I call on the Minister Jenny Gilruth to speak to amendment forty three and the other amendments in this group?
Presiding Officer, let me start by saying that the government recognises that transparency is of paramount importance in the current circumstances. Nothing in what we have proposed would remove the right of people to make FOI requests and the duty of public bodies and the Scottish government to respond promptly. I can also assure members that nothing in these proposals would restrict the normal channel of accountability of ministers through parliamentary questions and committee scrutiny. And as we have made clear, we are very open to looking at how scrutiny can be tailored for the current unique circumstances that we face. What we are proposing for FOI is timetable flexibility at a time when the absolute priority of the public sector has to be about protecting the safety of Scotland's people. Scottish public authorities are experiencing unprecedented pressures. And despite their best efforts, many are likely to miss statutory FOI time limits for requests for information during this pandemic. And as the Scottish Information Commissioner put in his briefing yesterday to all MSPs, the circumstances that public authorities across Scotland currently face are unprecedented. And we are wholly sympathetic to the pressures that the COVID-19 pandemic will be placing on public institutions, structures, resources and on staff. Meeting the current twenty working day FOI time scales and circumstances where premises are closed, where information may be inaccessible, where staff are absent or where organisations face unprecedented demands for essential services will undoubtedly create significant challenges for many organisations. Presiding Officer, while we welcome that comment, the fact remains that unless we legislate in this bill, public bodies will be breaking the law if they miss FOI deadlines. The bill therefore, yesable.
Asawa?
I thank the minister for taking an intervention. The Public Audit Post-Ledict of Scrutiny Committee looked at FOI legislation. We were actually due to publish our report two weeks ago, but decided, given the national... We were actually due to publish our report two weeks ago but decided, given the national circumstances, to pause on that report being published until we were further down the line. One of the things highlighted in that report though, in the evidence we received, both from external organisations but also from members of this parliament, was the use of proactive publishing. If we were to actively, proactively publish more information, that in itself would reduce the need for applications for freedom of information requests. Can the government look at proactive publishing as a potential solution rather than some of the provisions in this legislation?
Jenny Gilruth.
I thank Asarwah for that helpful intervention. I see my colleague Cabinet Secretary nodding there. You know, we are looking as a government at the moment at how we communicate our message in a different way. We are living through pretty unique circumstances at this moment in time and so displaying documents, for example, online is exactly one of the ways that we would look to in the future, share information with the public, which we might not have done in the past necessarily online. The bill makes provision for temporary modifications to FOI deadlines as a proportionate response to these unprecedented circumstances. There has been much discussion since we published our proposals on whether we should limit the proposals to frontline health services. And it is true, of course, that NHS boards, GPs and others in the healthcare sector are on the front line of addressing this pandemic, but a vast range of the public sector is involved in the response to the pandemic on matters including housing, transport, social services, education in local and in central government and in agencies and public bodies. The current emergency affects all of the people of Scotland in a way which has never been seen before. Every public authority is affected, all but essential workers are working from home. As an example, within the Scottish government, occupancy rates in our buildings are down at ninety seven percent. Many staff are carrying responsibilities and we know that levels of sickness... Can I just make some progress? Thank you. We, yes, I will. We know that levels of sickness will increase as the pandemic progresses and that this will affect organisations' ability to respond to requests. And this is not business as usual for the Scottish government itself, far from it. Teams that deal with housing, with education, with food standards, with social security and with a wide range of other matters are now working together on our response to COVID-19. Essential services need to be delivered. A vast range of government policy and legislative work, not least on this bill and other emergency legislation, needs to continue and it needs to continue at pace. Mr Finlay.
Neil Finlay.
Couldn't disagree with a word the Minister has said in relation to how public bodies are responding, but this is exactly the same response that's happening in England, in Wales, in Germany, in France and all across our western democracies, yet none of them are seeking to restrict in the way we are here. So therefore, I appeal to the Minister again. Can we take a balanced, sensible, non-legislative approach to this rather than get ourselves tied into legislation that I would hope that none of us want to pass today?
Jenny Gilruth.
I thank Neil Finlay for that intervention. In terms of what we are doing, we are taking a balanced and sensible approach. We have looked at the recommendations from the Commissioner and that is what has informed our amendments. With regard to the actions of other countries, some of those countries might yet take action in terms of FOI or comparable legislation, we don't yet know as the pandemic plays out. So I don't think it's necessarily fair to compare where we are right now to, you know, where the rest of the world is in terms of the pandemic and its spread globally. The proposals that we set out in the bill included extending the default FOI deadline to sixty days with an option for an additional extension of up to forty days where the cases were particularly complex, but we have accepted the advice of the Scottish Information Commissioner, as I mentioned, that it would be better for the additional extension to be an option that can be targeted where bodies are under particular pressure. Government amendments forty three to forty six therefore provide a power for ministers to make directions allowing public authorities to extend deadlines further. That power is designed to be used in a targeted way to areas of particular pressure. Before using these powers, ministers must consult the Information Commissioner and the directions cannot apply to the Scottish government itself. This provision would replace paragraph five to schedule six and therefore we are happy to support amendment forty one in the name of Ross Greer. I trust that this will reassure members and that they will be able to support these amendments. Turning to the other amendments tabled by the opposition, let me first say that I do appreciate we are all trying to find the right balance here. Amendments twenty eight and thirty in the name of Neil Finlay seek to restrict the flexibility to health service bodies alone and we cannot agree to that. As I have explained, a vast range of public sector bodies are engaged in responding to the pandemic. We should recognise the effect that that is having on them too. Amendment forty in the name of Ross Greer also proposes that these measures should only apply to certain public authorities and would require Scottish ministers to bring an affirmative instrument to this chamber to specify this. We recognise that this would allow for a far greater targeting of these measures, but there are thousands of public authorities to which the two thousand and two Freedom of Information Scotland Act applies. Time is of the essence, Presiding Officer. It would not be feasible for Scottish ministers to assess all authorities for potential inclusion and to bring forward subordinate legislation in sufficient time to address the pressures being felt right now by authorities across the country. Accordingly, we cannot support this amendment. I'd like to make some progress, thank you. Amendment twenty nine in the name of Neil Finlay would remove the entirety of part two from schedule six. The bill would then make no provision whatsoever for freedom of information and the current law would continue to apply. Again, we cannot accept this. The Scottish government is clear that our hard-pressed public authorities need additional flexibility so that they can focus on dealing with this pandemic and that this amendment would completely therefore deny them that flexibility. Amendments thirty one to thirty five and thirty seven to thirty nine in the name of Neil Finlay seek to reduce the new timescales proposed in the bill. Again, we are unable to support these proposals as we do not think they give authorities sufficient flexibility. I stress that authorities remain under a duty to respond promptly and this will be, in many cases, mean that they will respond well in advance of the sixth working day in any event. On amendment thirty six in the name of Ross Greer, while we recognise Mr Greer's desire to make the bill more targeted, we are unable to support this proposal. We think it's important that authorities have time to reach the correct decision rather than a rushed one. On amendment forty two in the name of Ross Greer, that would remove the ability of ministers to introduce the ability to extend should the situation warrant it as the Commissioner recommended. And we think that it's sensible to have such a power should circumstances change as otherwise fresh primary legislation would be required. Mr Greer's amendment would cut across what the Commissioner has recommended and so we cannot support it. Amendment forty seven in the name of Neil Finlay would enable the Commissioner to submit a revised budget to the Scottish Parliamentary Corporate Body for approval. While we would wish to ensure that the Commissioner is properly resourced, we observe that paragraph four A brackets two of schedule two to FOISA already allows the Commissioner to prepare a revised budget and submit it. We therefore think that FOISA already contains provision to achieve what Mr Finlay seeks and so are not persuaded that his amendment is absolutely necessary. We therefore do not support it. Amendments fifty six and fifty seven in the name of Neil Finlay would see all of these measures expire at the end of June twenty twenty. We do not think that this would provide our hard-pressed authorities with the flexibility that they need right now. Accordingly, we do not support these amendments. However, section twelve of the bill gives ministers the power to bring forward the expiry date of the provisions by regulations. Thank you, Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Mr Gilruth. And can I call Adam Tomkins?
Presiding Officer, we very much welcome the fact that the government have moved on this issue since yesterday, but their concessions, while welcome, do not go far enough and we will be supporting all of the opposition amendments in this group except for amendment forty seven in Mr Finlay's name, which we don't think is necessary. But all of the other amendments in this group we will be supporting, subject to the fact that we recognise that they are not perfect, as Mr Finlay did in his opening remarks. And we would certainly want to see amendment twenty eight, if it is accepted, extended at stage three to local authorities as well as health boards, GP practices and the like. Last week, in giving evidence to the Finance and Constitution Committee, Mr Russell said that he wanted to see the Scottish government placed under increased scrutiny and oversight during the coronavirus crisis because of the extraordinary powers that they are, having conferred upon them, both by UK legislation and by legislation to be passed by this parliament. And yet they seem now to have rather resiled from that bold position by being, by being what appears to be, I'll give away in a second, Mr Russell, by being what appears to be the only country in the democratic world that is seeking to shield itself, the only government in the democratic world that is seeking to shield itself from increased scrutiny under freedom of information legislation. If Mr Russell wants to intervene on me, I'm happy to give away.
I mean, two very quick points. One is that the recommendations we are bringing forward are the recommendations of the Information Commissioner. So it would be perverse if this chamber were to reject the recommendations of the person they entrust to bring forward and to monitor this legislation. It would be extraordinary. But the second point is this, freedom of information is not the only instrument of scrutiny. I have made it very clear, for example, I will refer later on to a very helpful proposal from Anna Sarwa in terms of scrutiny by this chamber and by this chamber on behalf of the people of Scotland. I hope to bring forward in the coming days new arrangements to allow individual members to have in touch with government about specific constituency issues very quickly indeed. We have protected, the Bureau has protected, as I understand it, the issue of parliamentary questions. To behave as if FOI is the only scrutiny is simply wrong. And as far as other countries are concerned, sometimes in this chamber, people are saying to the Scottish government, go further, you must do what isn't happening elsewhere. But the moment we say this is required in a very cogent explanation, they say, oh no, draw back, we can't go as far because nobody else has done it. That is also perverse.
Adam Tomkins.
It isn't perverse at all, Mr Russell, and Mr Russell knows that it isn't perverse. If a court rules that a certain measure is not necessary to comply with international human rights standards, but we as a parliament nonetheless wish to enact that measure, we're not acting perversely. Courts, regulators and commissioners, including the Scottish Information Commissioner, they set the floor, we set the ceiling. They set the floor and we set the ceiling and we are not acting perversely in wanting to have additional protections that safeguard fundamental rights of freedom of information more robustly than has been recommended by the Scottish Information Commissioner. That isn't perversity at all, Mr Russell, and Mr Russell knows that, knows that full well. My view is that this doesn't require legislation at all. And I go back to the necessity test. We are prepared to work with the government to enact the legislation that the government needs in order to address the crisis that we all confront. On that, I think we are all agreed, but this doesn't require legislation at all. There's no equivalent to any of this in the United Kingdom's coronavirus act passed last week because there a non-legislative solution has been found. And the non-legislative solution is that the Information Commissioner has simply put out a statement saying, and I quote, "We will not be penalising public authorities for prioritising other areas or adapting their usual approach during this extraordinary period." That's all we need, a bit of sensible, pragmatic, administrative flexibility to deal with what is undoubtedly the case, that health boards should be prioritising things other than processing FOI requests at the moment. Final point I want to make on this issue, Presiding Officer, is this, we are asking, indeed, we are requiring by law, the people that we represent here to make extraordinary changes to their lives, to their businesses and to their lifestyles. We need to take the people with us. And the way in which we take the people with us is by being open and transparent and not secretive. These proposals are unnecessary, they are unneeded and for these reasons we will support all of the opposition amendments in this group except for amendment forty seven.
Thank you very much. Call Alex Call Hamilton.
Thank you very much, Presiding Officer. I don't intend to add much more to what has been a very robust and full-throated debate. Continued scrutiny is essential when legislation is being sped through and parliamentary proceedings are being scaled back. As the Commissioner's Office told the government, public interest in decisions made during this time is significant and that is understandable. Services are refocusing to save lives, experiencing office disruption and dealing with staff absence, but not every public body and public servant is being occupied by the coronavirus or the response to that crisis to the same degree. Some might even have spare capacity as their normal operations are being scaled back and projects, including new legislation, are being postponed. So the bill as drafted went far beyond what was necessary. It was setting the FOI system up for paralysis and opening the door to suppression of scrutiny, particularly from journalists. The initial response in the first stage appeal need not take a combined ten months. Such rules, coupled with the relaxed approach some organisations to take to existing statutory deadlines, could see a request sent today potentially not even answered before the next Scottish general election. As with the removal of juries, the Commissioner wasn't aware of any other countries adopting such measures in their emergency legislation and like Adam Tomkins, we too will be supporting all opposition amendments.
Thank you very much. And can I call on Neil Finlay to wind up in this section and to press a withdraw amendment twenty eight?
Thanks, Presiding Officer, and we'll press the amendment. Can I say I think we've had a very good discussion and I think it's been, got to exactly the right issues that people would expect us to be discussing at this time. I would make an appeal at this stage to my colleagues on the green benches to take a principled approach to this, that we can take a principled approach to this, support amendment twenty nine, support amendment twenty nine, we can get that section out of the bill and then we move on to, we move on to a non-legislative answer to this, which we would all take part in those discussions willingly with the Information Commissioner. And I think we would come out with a far better result than what we will do if this legislation is to proceed. I appeal to Parliament to make that decision. This is in the interest of our constituents, all of our constituents, and it's in the interest of good governance and reflects the view expressed by the First Minister that we want absolute transparency throughout this really difficult time for our country.
Thank you. So the question is that amendment twenty eight be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a division on amendment twenty eight and this will be a one-minute division. Members, we vote now. The result of the vote on amendment number twenty eight in the name of Neil Finlay is yes, thirty five, no, forty seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call amendment twenty nine in the name of Neil Finlay? Neil Finlay to move or not move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that amendment twenty nine be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on amendment twenty nine. Members, we vote now. The result of the vote on amendment number twenty nine in the name of Neil Finlay is yes, thirty five, no, forty seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. I call amendment thirty, Neil Finlay to move or not move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that amendment thirty be agreed to. Are we agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on amendment thirty. Members, we vote now. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty in the name of Neil Finlay is yes, thirty five, no, forty seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call amendment thirty one, Neil Finlay to move or not move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that amendment thirty one be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on amendment thirty one. Members, we vote now. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty one in the name of Neil Finlay is yes, thirty five, no, forty seven. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call amendment thirty two, Neil Finlay to move or not move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that amendment thirty two be agreed to. Are we agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on amendment thirty two. Members, we vote now. The result of the vote on amendment number thirty two in the name of Neil Finlay is yes, thirty five, no, no 47. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment 33? Neil Findlay to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 33 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 33. The result of the vote on Amendment number 33 in the name of Neil Findlay is yes 35, no 47. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. I call Amendment 34. Neil Findlay to move? That is moved. The question is that Amendment 34 be agreed to. Are we agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 34. The result of the vote on Amendment number 34 in the name of Neil Findlay is yes 35, no 47. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment 35? Neil Findley to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 35 be agreed to. Are we agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. Let's move to a vote on Amendment 35. The result of the vote on Amendment number 35 in the name of Neil Findlay is yes 35, no 47. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment 36 in the name of Ross Greer? Ross Greer to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 36 be agreed to. Are we agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 36. Members may cast their votes now. The result of the vote on Amendment number 36 in the name of Ross Greer is yes 41, no 41. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore on a casting vote. And in convention, the Presiding Officer casts against change. The Parliament has not made up its mind, so I vote against Amendment 36. It is not agreed. Can I call Amendment 37 in the name of Neil Findlay? Neil Findlay to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 37 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 37. The result of the vote on Amendment number 37 in the name of Neil Findlay is yes 41, no 41. There were no abstentions, the vote is tied and therefore, again, following convention, I will vote against the amendment, and Amendment 37 is not agreed. Can I call Amendment 38 in the name of Neil Findlay? Neil Findlay to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 38 be agreed to. Are we agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 38. The result of the vote on Amendment number 38 in the name of Neil Findlay is yes 41, no 41. There were no abstentions, the vote is tied, the Parliament has not made up its mind, therefore I will vote against the amendment. The amendment is not agreed. Can I call Amendment 39? Neil Findlay to move? That is moved. The question is that Amendment 39 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 39. Members, we vote now. The result of the vote on Amendment number 39 in the name of Neil Findlay is yes 41, no 41. There were no abstentions, the amendment is tied, therefore I will use my casting vote against the proposed change. The amendment is not agreed. Can I call Amendment 40 in the name of Neil Findlay? Neil Findlay to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 40 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 40. Members, we vote now. Okay, that's, yes. One second, Mr Greer. Yes, can I call this amendment again in the name of Ross Greer? Mr Greer to move or not move?
Move, Presiding Officer.
That is moved, thank you. So the question is that Amendment 40 in the name of Ross Greer be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We are not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 40. Members may cast their votes now. I think what we'll do is we'll just reset. If members, just hold on a second, we'll reset the vote. Okay, this time, colleagues, I think my fault for throwing a spanner in the works. I'm going to call the vote on Amendment 40. Members may cast their votes now. The result of the vote on Amendment number 40 in the name of Ross Greer is yes 41, no 41. There were no abstentions, the amendment is not agreed, therefore on a casting vote I will vote against the amendment. It is not agreed. Can I call Amendment 41 in the name of Ross Greer? Ross Greer to move or not move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 41 be agreed to. Are we agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. Can I call Amendment 42 in the name of Ross Greer? Ross Greer to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 42 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 42. Members may cast their votes now. The result of the vote on Amendment number 42 in the name of Ross Greer is yes 41, no 41. There were no abstentions, the vote is tied, therefore I will use my casting vote against the proposal. The amendment is not agreed. Can I call Amendment 43 in the name of the Cabinet Secretary? Previously debated Cabinet Secretary to move?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment 43 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. Can I call Amendment 44, also in the name of the Cabinet Secretary? Cabinet Secretary to move?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment 44 be agreed to. Are we agreed?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I call Amendment 45? Cabinet Secretary to move?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment 45 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. I call Amendment 46. Cabinet Secretary to move?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment 46 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. Can I call Amendment 47 in the name of Neil Findlay? Neil Findlay to move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 47 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 47. The result of the vote on Amendment number 47 in the name of Neil Findlay is yes 23, no 58. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. The next question is that Schedule 6 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The question is that Section 8 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
Thank you. We're going to turn now to the section on social security. Can I call Amendment 48 in the name of Polly McNeil in a group on its own? Polly McNeil to move and speak to Amendment 48.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. This is a probing amendment. Thinking ahead about what the economy is likely to be looking like in the months to come, I think we're all concerned about a further crash in the economy and looking at the short-term gaps that might be, who might need help and what kind of help they might need, whether it be rent holidays, rent breaks. Obviously, that would have to be underwritten by government, and I think it's a matter we should discuss further, not proposing to discuss today. My amendment explores setting up funds for the specific purpose of helping those who fall through the cracks. I want to emphasise this point, that's people who are not on welfare, who may have experienced a pay reduction, who may need rent relief or rent support because of the way they've been affected by the pandemic. My amendment in Schedule 7 allows local authorities who already do administer welfare funds to provide assistance for up to three months. So discretionary housing payments are designed for those who are already on universal credit or benefits, and welfare funds are not applicable for the purposes of rent. So I conclude, Presiding Officer, by saying I just wanted to probe the government on thinking ahead just a little bit to where we might be should those who fall in between the cracks, who can't rely on discretionary housing payments or the welfare fund, to have some way in which they can have their rent supported should the economy crash in future.
Thank you very much, Ms McNeil. Can I call on the Cabinet Secretary, Michael Russell, to respond?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. And can I thank Polly McNeil for tabling this amendment, which, as she says, is a probing amendment, and she is absolutely right to probe on this issue. The issue of how people will make their way through and survive in these circumstances is absolutely central to the concerns, not just of the government, but right across the chamber. Of course, there has been initial response to that by the increase in the Scottish welfare fund, a very substantial increase of £45 million, but that will be, I have to say, by no means the end of it. There will have to be considerable help for people across Scotland and indeed across these islands and indeed across the globe if people are to be helped through what we are now facing. In terms of the specific issue on rent, of course, the right place and the appropriate place for that is universal credit. We know the difficulties of people getting through to that and accessing that at the present moment, but that is very much what it's for. People have paid into the system very often, and they are not only entitled to, but they must be in a position to get the support of the system, and that will be there for them. And we are told that, and we believe that that is the case. But I want to commit myself here and now to continued vigilance on this issue, and I think, as I said in my opening remarks, it seems hours ago now this morning, we are committed to continuing to keep legislation under review. Sorry, of course, if the member wants to go. Yeah.
Thank you for giving way. I just wanted to come back to you on the point. What I'd ask the government just to consider is, the Cabinet Secretary is quite right that many people now will turn to universal credit. So if those are qualified, then they should have some support for their housing. But I'm concerned there might be some, for whatever reason, and some people will get something out of universal credit, but they may not get their housing support. So it was just to make that point.
Take the point, and I'm absolutely certain that the ministers responsible, the officials responsible, right across government, will be looking at this, not just on a weekly, but on a daily basis, and we will come back to it again and again. And as we come into, as I was saying, the next piece of legislation, and definitely there will be, as I indicated that this morning, then we will need to return to this issue. So if Polly McNeil can take my assurances in those matters, what she has put here is extremely important. It may be possible to flesh this out into a solution, a wider solution in another piece of legislation, but she has marked the card, and she has done exactly the right thing by marking that card, and we will continue to work with her and across the chamber to try and make sure that people, when they do, undoubtedly fall between the cracks, there is something there for them.
Thank you, Cabinet Secretary. Polly McNeil to wind up and to press a withdrawal, her amendment.
Nothing further to add, and I'm not pressing my amendment. I seek to withdraw.
Thank you very much. Ms McNeil seeks to withdraw Amendment 48. Does any member object?
No.
No one objects. Thank you. So move on to the next question, which is to call Amendment 49 in the name of Ross Greer, previously debated with Amendment 1. Ross Greer to move or not move?
Move.
That is moved. So the question is that Amendment 49 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 49. This will be a one-minute division, and I call members to jibber. Members, we vote now. A one-minute division. The result of the vote on Amendment 49 in the name of Ross Greer is yes 19, no 54. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment 50 in the name of Andy Whitman? Andy Whitman to move?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment 50 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We move to a vote. This will be a 30-second division, and Amendment 50. The result of the vote on Amendment number 50 in the name of Andy Whitman is yes 19, no 55. There were no abstentions, the amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment 51 in the name of Andy Whitman? Andy Whitman to move?
Not moved.
That's not moved. So we're going to turn now to the next section, which is about other measures in relation to coronavirus. Can I call Amendment 52? Can I call Amendment 52 in the name of Polly MacNeil, grouped with Amendment 53? Polly MacNeil to move Amendment 52 and speak to both amendments in this group.
Thank you very much. This is an amendment that I submitted on the request of the Law Society. It means Schedule 7, page 6, and line 6, and it certes 10 working days. The amendment extends the period of effect of the advance notice under the Land Registration et Cetera Scotland Act, and it tends to provide additional time for solicitors to prepare and submit applications for registration on application. Registers of Scotland temporarily suspended the application record to paper applications on the 24th of March 2020, and as of the 24th of March, the registers of Scotland were unable to accept paper application for registration, and this includes some advance notices for first registration and transfer of part and application for registration of deeds including disposition. In the context of the purchase of residential homes, an advance notice gives the purchaser protection that safeguards their purchase from a competing disposition granted to a third party entering the register for their own disposition for a period of 35 days. In other words, it does give the purchaser satisfaction that it has been properly registered and not open to challenge. Following the suspension, the immediate concern was that any deed that had not been registered would lose the protection of that advance notice and the register of Scotland. It did not reopen the application record within that 35 days to allow the deed to be registered. The Law Society has worked closely with the registers of Scotland to facilitate a way that transactions could proceed satisfying particular framework, which involves extending the time period of the advance notice to provide sufficient time to register the deed, that is, from the submission of the advance notice until 10 working days after the application record fully opens. The bill extends the period to 10 days. The Law Society believes that clarity is required as to the time period. By inserting this, it would also cover and take into account any bank holidays, weekends, where they would be unable to accept paper application. The keeper has confirmed that she will consult with the Law Society as to whether she intends to reopen the application record. However, the merger of legislation may be required to provide that safeguard.
Thank you. Can I call Andy Whitehead to speak to Amendment 53 and the other amendment in this group?
Thanks very much, indeed, Presiding Officer. Members may be aware of many instances of land managers continuing to set the hills alight over the past few weeks. They do this for a variety of reasons under legal restrictions imposed by Section 23 of the Hill Farming Act 1946 that imposes a season from the 1st of October to the 15th of April, or an extended season to the 30th of April. I commend the call by Scottish Land and Estates exactly one week ago for land managers to desist from mure burning due to the potential demands that this will place on the emergency services and others issues in relationship to the restrictions around work. However, it's clear that this call is not being heeded, as evidence across the country demonstrates, and this is even more important as the latest fire risk assessment published this morning on behalf of the Scottish Wildlife, sorry, the Scottish Wildfire Forum, is that the overall fire danger assessment for southern and eastern Scotland is officially very high this week coming, and in eastern Scotland is extreme on Saturday the 4th of April. So my Amendment 53 brings the mure burning season to an immediate halt and does not allow any such activity during the emergency period. I move Amendment 53.
Thank you very much. Can I call Murdo Fraser?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I want to speak briefly to the two very disparate amendments in this group. In relation to Polly MacNeil's Amendment 52, I should declare my interest as a member of the Law Society of Scotland, and I very much welcome this amendment, which I know originated from the Law Society, that seeks to extend the time available to solicitors to submit applications for registration of title to the keeper from 10 days to 10 working days. It's a very modest and very sensible change. I hope that the entire chamber will support it. I don't think I'll be quite so generous about Andy Whitehead's Amendment 53, although I have no interest to declare in that respect. I'm not the owner of a grouse mure, sadly, at least not yet, Presiding Officer, although I appreciate that it distinguishes me from some of my colleagues on these benches. Now, Presiding Officer, it is an important qualification for any legislation that it meets the test of necessity, and that is particularly the case when it comes to emergency legislation that has been passed by Parliament without the opportunity for proper consultation and scrutiny. This measure does not meet the test of necessity. It does not meet the test of necessity because despite what Mr Whitehead says, there is no evidence that mure burning is currently taking place in Scotland. Scottish Land and Estates have been very clear in telling their members that mure burning should not take place, and in any event, the mure burning season comes to an end on the 15th of April, which is two weeks from today, and it's likely will come to an end before this legislation is even enacted. And therefore, this measure is unnecessary. That's the kindest thing I can say about it. In fact, all this is, is Andy Whitehead, once again, on his favourite hobby horse, of attacking landed estates and the people who own them. There are many other activities in the countryside that one could equally argue would present a challenge to the emergency services. Oh, Mr Whitehead, I'll give way.
Andy Whitehead.
I merely observed to Mr Fraser that Scottish Land and Estates have called for their members to desist. All this amendment is doing is to give that the force of law.
Where I disagree with Mr Whitehead is, we should not be legislating unless there is compelling need to bring in a new law. This proposal is not necessary because there is no social ill it is trying to cure. There is no evidence of mure burning taking place at the moment, and even if there was, by the time this bill is enacted, the chances are the mure burning season will be over. No, this is Mr Whitehead, again, taking his favourite subject, attacking people who earn a living from the countryside and from grouse mowers. It is vindictive move, and it should be opposed by this Parliament.
Can I call on the Cabinet Secretary, Michael Russell?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. I find myself in the position of being contrary on both of these amendments, so if you bear with me, I'll do my very best to explain why. There is absolutely no reason why we should not support Polly MacNeil's amendment, except there is apparently a reason within the registers in terms of how they operate their system, their computer systems, and we have worked hard today to see if we could accept this. The problem is that the computer systems work on days and not working days, and to change the computer systems will require substantial work at this stage. Now, I have a solution to this, which is, as Polly MacNeil suggests, there will probably be a need for emergency legislation to reopen the registers. That is what is being discussed. And if we can resolve that, then we will, of course, put this in, because we're entirely sympathetic to having as much time as possible. But it can't be resolved here today, unfortunately, and I wish it could, because there's no point in me objecting to this, you know, for any other reason than there is a strong reason. I don't want to burden them. Sorry, I'll give way.
Polly MacNeil.
Yeah, I appreciate what the Cabinet Secretary is trying to do. I think we're probably one in terms of the outcome. I just wanted to just put on the record, and I'm sure that you know this, that based on case law that we've seen in the past, these can be quite critical for people when they're registered properties. So I realise that it may not be possible to bring, I don't know what you're thinking about bringing the legislation forward, but it's quite important just to make that point, that some people could be caught out by that.
I entirely accept that our intention will be to give the maximum time possible. This is for the registers to decide at the end of the day, but I don't want to put in statute something that then creates an additional problem for the registers, and I tell the chamber that, in all honesty. I am by no means an expert on this. I had not heard of this before about an hour ago, but knowing it now, I feel it is my duty to share it in the chamber, and I hope you will, the member will withdraw this. On Mr Whitehead, I shall be contrary, but this time to the Conservatives. I read this amendment with a sense of déjà vu. It brought back the happy days when I was Environment Minister and had heard neither of Brexit or coronavirus, and if only I could go back to those days, I would. I was familiar with mure burn regulations then. It is a sensitive issue. If any mure burn is taking place at this stage, it should stop, quite clearly, and given the forecast, it must stop. I can see absolutely no harm in putting this into statute to support Mr Whitehead, and therefore I would suggest that we do so. There is, of course, it is not simple enough to say it only covers till the 15th of April. There are circumstances that mure burn can continue beyond the 15th of April, for I think another fortnight, though I'm now dredging out of my memory regulations which I haven't thought about for a very long time. I think in those circumstances, I would be happy to support that, but others may not be.
Thank you very much. So Polly MacNeil to wind up in this section and to press or withdraw the amendment in her name.
I was looking across the chamber there to Murdo Fraser. I think you probably minded the same way that I am, which is, we want to fix this, and we want to fix it correctly. And on that promise that the Cabinet Secretary, I believe, made, and on the understanding that some people could potentially be affected by this, because your property is not wholly yours until your title is absolutely registered by the keeper, and hopefully no one will be affected by that, but I would look forward to having that discussion, and I'm sure the Law Society will pick that up, and I'm sure they will be in touch when they see the, so I'm happy, Presiding Officer, not to press for that reason.
Thank you very much. So Miss MacNeil wishes to withdraw Amendment 52 in her name. Does any member object? No, thank you. Can I call Amendment 53, Andy Whitehead to move Amendment 53 in his name? Thank you. The question is that Amendment 53 be agreed to. Are we all agreed? We're not agreed. We move to a vote on Amendment 53. This will be a one-minute division, and I summon Members of the Chamber for a one-minute division on Amendment 53. Summon, yes, summon them to the chamber. The result of the vote on Amendment Number 53 in the name of Andy Whitehead is yes 59, no 17. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore agreed. The question is that, the next question is that Schedule 7 be agreed to. Are we all agreed? We are agreed. Now returning to the next section, the last section, which is on equalities and human rights. Can I call Amendment 54 in the name of Ruth McGuire, grouped with Amendment 59? Ruth McGuire to move Amendment 54 and speak to both amendments in the group.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. We know that those already facing inequality are most likely to be negatively affected by COVID-19, with increased risk of facing financial and physical insecurity. Women, for example, are affected in terms of their own health as frontline workers, as carers, but also in policies brought forward to manage its impact. Periods of isolation and social distancing can exacerbate women's experiences of domestic abuse, effectively trapping them in unsafe situations with limited access to vital support and escape. Presiding Officer, as of 31st March, seven women have been murdered in their own homes. This is a serious matter. I want to praise the Scottish Government's decision to fund Scottish Women's Aid and Rape Crisis Scotland to ensure that key services they provide are maintained, and I want to thank Women's Aid and Rape Crisis for the important work that they do to keep women safe, which is always challenging, but it's probably been particularly difficult recently. I want them to know that they're valued, respected, and supported. This amendment creates a duty on ministers to have regard to opportunities to advance equality and reflects mainstreaming obligations under the Equality Act 2010. It does not introduce any additional reporting obligations during this period of crisis, but what it does do is ensure that Scotland's efforts to eradicate gender inequality lose as little ground as possible during this crisis. I move Amendment 54 in my name.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Miss McGuire. Can I call Monica Lennon to speak to Amendment 59 and the other amendment in this group?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. The purpose of this amendment is to ensure proper monitoring of the use of emergency mental health powers. Amendments to the 2003 Mental Health Act by the UK Bill could have significant impact on vulnerable adults. The Scottish Human Rights Commission has suggested that local authorities and health boards should be required to report on where and how they have used these powers in relation to mental health, and that if appropriately resourced, the Mental Welfare Commission would be an appropriate body to receive these reports. While we accept this bill to be necessary, the significant implications for the safeguarding of human rights for those who are mentally ill is of concern. That's why increased powers for mental health professionals and for the potential increase in periods of detention must only be undertaken where necessary and must be properly monitored. The powers must only be applied, with this in mind, rather than solely as easing administrative burdens on health and social care staff. Reporting of when and how powers have been used will be an important check and balance. Notwithstanding what I've just said, Presiding Officer, a short time ago, I've had an email from the Scottish Government, which, if it had prior sight of, would have perhaps resulted in different drafting, but I would like to ask that the Cabinet Secretary to clarify that he can give further assurance about what measures can be put in place to ensure proper scrutiny of additional powers, especially for those vulnerable groups. This relates back to some of the timing of what's already been implemented, but I've looked at that email, accept it in good faith. If I can get further clarification, I won't need to move the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Shall I call Cabinet Secretary, Michael Russell?
Thank you, Presiding Officer. On the amendment from Ruth McGuire, can I welcome the amendment? It is very much required, and she has drawn attention to very considerable issues that are arising and regrettably will continue to arise during this very difficult period. I think the insertion of the new preamble to Section 9 will be of great importance, but it must have importance if it drives our minds and our actions towards making sure that we are mindful of these matters, and I make that commitment on behalf of the Government. I thank Monica Lennon for her remarks. The difficulty with this amendment, as she knows, and I'm sorry it has taken time to come back to her, but we have been sort of running to stand still for part of this afternoon in terms of the detail of these amendments, but I want to make a number of points, and I very much respect the point she has made, and indeed in my own conversation this week with the Scottish Human Rights Commission, the position of the Mental Welfare Commission was raised, and I make a commitment to ensure that the Mental Welfare Commission is involved in the reporting process. But the problem of the amendment is really twofold. One is that the reporting period is actually longer than the reporting period that we've already decided upon in this act, so in actual fact, it would be a slightly worse set of circumstances than it would otherwise be. But the second one is that there is very little in this act, a tiny subset in this act, that would be affected by it, because it'd be a tiny subset of the adults with incapacity. The real target of this is the legislative consent motion we gave to the UK Bill, which has substantial powers under the Mental Health Acts. Now, I made a commitment when, during the LCM process, I'm quite sure it's on record, and I'm glad it is, to say that we will report in detail upon the use of those, and we will make sure that reporting covers the whole country, and we will engage the Mental Welfare Commission in that. But this amendment, in actual fact, doesn't help, and in actual fact, would put burdens upon people which would be utterly irrelevant because they didn't refer to this act. If I can, Presiding Officer, just say a word or two about the reporting issue, because I think it's an issue of wider concern to the chamber. It is very important that we have as much reporting as we possibly can have. Now, there is a proposal that I know Anna Sarwar has written to you about, which has been circulated to members. I want to indicate the Scottish Government is happy with that proposal, and if that proposal were to move forward, and I'm grateful to Mr Sarwar, who has done us all a service by making a concrete proposal about how things should go forward. If that is to go forward in either completely or in some variation from the Bureau, then the Scottish Government will work hard to work with that group, with that special committee, and indeed, I've said to Mr Sarwar today that I'm quite happy if the committee is to come into existence very quickly. I commit myself to taking part in a video conference or some other conference with it as soon as it is established. We are already in the process of looking at the reporting guidelines, and I'm commissioning work on that now. I would want that work to be influenced by that structure, or whatever structure came into place, so we were all clear of what the reporting guidelines were, how the information was brought together, and how that information was then disseminated. In addition to that, I am looking, and I told Mr Findlay this at lunchtime today, and I repeat it now, I am looking with colleagues at the way in which we can give a more direct and faster access for individual members to common issues or complaints that are raised by them. In common with everybody in this chamber, we've been, I've been deluged this week from constituents who have concerns, genuine concerns. Some of those have been dealt with very rapidly in terms of PPP issues, PPE issues. Others of them have had to sit on one side because we needed answers from elsewhere. I do appreciate that that is difficult. So we are looking to see what we can do in that regard, and I would hope to have something to bring forward in that within the next couple of days. There is also, as I've mentioned earlier, the enhanced issue of ensuring that questions are answered rapidly, and, you know, we will do our very best to provide as much information as possible and to respond, and also to take part in the scrutiny structures that this Parliament puts in place. So I make those commitments, but I do say to Monica Lennon that this amendment, actually, I'd be grateful if it was withdrawn, because it will, it will not enhance the situation. Presiding Officer, I don't know when we come on to it, but I'd like to say a word or two about the Stage 3 process when we conclude this, just to ask Members for some help with that.
Thank you very much, Cabinet Secretary. Can I call Ruth McGuire to wind up and to press or withdraw in this section?
I'd just press, Presiding Officer.
Very much. So the question is that Amendment 54 be agreed to. Are we all agreed? We are agreed. Can I call Amendment 55? So the next question is that Section 9 be agreed to. Are we all agreed? We are agreed. Can I call Amendment Can I call Amendment 55 in the name of the Cabinet Secretary? This was previously debated with Amendment 1. Cabinet Secretary to move formally?
Moved.
Thank you. The question is that Amendment 55 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The question is that Section 10 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
Can I call Amendment? That is agreed. Can I call Amendment 56 in the name of Neil Finley? Neil Finley to move or not move?
Move.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 56 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We'll move to a vote on Amendment 56. This will be a one-minute division. Members may vote now on Amendment 56. The result of the vote on Amendment number 56 in the name of Neil Finley is yes 32, no 45. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment 57 in the name of Neil Finley? Neil Finley to move?
Moved.
That is moved. The question is that Amendment 57 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
No.
We're not agreed. We'll move to a vote on Amendment 57. Members may vote now. The result of the vote on Amendment number 57 in the name of Neil Finley is yes 32, no 45. There were no abstentions. The amendment is therefore not agreed. Can I call Amendment 58 in the name of the Cabinet Secretary? Cabinet Secretary to move?
Moved.
Thank you very much. The question is that Amendment 58 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The question is that Section 11 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The question is that Sections 11 to 14 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. Can I call Amendment 59 in the name of Monica Lennon? Monica Lennon to move or not move?
Not moved.
Thank you. That's not moved. The question is that Sections 15 to 17 be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
We are agreed. The question is that the long title be agreed to. Are we all agreed?
Yes.
That is agreed. Thank you very much. Now, that ends Stage 2 consideration of the Coronavirus Scotland Bill and concludes this meeting of a committee of the whole Parliament. Now, I was going to say a few words, but I think the Cabinet Secretary, Michael Russell, wishes to make a few comments about Stage 3. Cabinet Secretary.
I just want to make two points, Presiding Officer. This has been a very full and detailed debate this afternoon. It is not my intention to bring any amendments to Stage 3 to this bill. Quite clearly, there are always small matters you can deal with. But I think that, given the detailed debate that we've had on almost every item, then I think that would be the appropriate response. Members, of course, are entirely free to do so. But it does seem important for us to give a lead and to say we think that it would be possible to move on now to have a brief debate about the overall bill, but to make sure the bill was passed and on its way.
That's very helpful. What I was going to suggest is that I'm going to shortly suspend Parliament, just for a few moments. And I was going to ask the Cabinet Secretary, I'll do this, as the Cabinet Secretary and the business managers all to join me in Committee Room 3, the Adversary Room. And we'll just confirm whether or not there are any plans to move amendments. At that point, I'll come back and I'll inform members of when we can move to the next stage, either Stage 3 deadlines or the Stage 3 debate. So we'll suspend probably for five minutes. I would ask members to loiter around the chamber for five minutes. Can I ask members to keep a social distance, if at all possible? Please keep a social distance.